Now, that sounds tense in my head, but I don't know. I have no idea. I'm not helping like this. I'm trying to help the show. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market. So, it's like politics today. You try to tell me if I'm a conservative or not. Yeah. I said, "No." Okay. Let's give it the holiday. Give it to him. I got this going. I came back. I don't know. We took it off the market. We had to put it back on the market.[568.11]
I'm going to call the Mojave County Board of Supervisors meeting for October 3rd of 2022 to order. Will you please rise for an invocation from Pastor Bill Franzen along with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Gracious heavenly Father, we come before you this morning just asking that you'll bless this meeting. I ask for a special blessing upon each supervisor, Lord. Your word says that all forms of government are God ordained, Father, so whether your ordained servants put a hedge of protection around them, may the service go, may the meeting go easy, maybe go in order, and I pray, Father, that the business will be taken care of in a mannerly way. We thank you, Father, for these servants, and we thank you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. The Pledge of Allegiance.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of Supervisors may by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the board's attorneys on any item contained in this agenda pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A 3 and 4. The Board of Supervisors may by motion recess into executive session to discuss and consider items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A 1, which authorizes discussion and consideration of employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, demotion, dismissal, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of a public officer, appointee, or employee of the county. A motion in action to call for executive session to be held October 17th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A 3, 4, and 7 to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk.
So made.
Second.
You've heard that motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Official business that come before the board, discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands. Attorney Esplin.
Nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Committee or legislative report, Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you and good morning. I chaired the Board of Health meeting just last week, also attended the ACJC meeting and the ADWR public hearing, and attended the Workforce Development Board meeting.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. The Employee Benefit Trust Board met last week and a half ago, two weeks ago, and as always since I've been on, they have reported that we have a good, healthy trust with a good, healthy reserve. In fact, we always are told that ours is one of the best in the state. We will be putting together a presentation for everybody in a future meeting, hopefully a near-future meeting, and we'll learn more then. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. Just a couple of water updates this morning regarding this board's action at our last board meeting where we decided to file against the Greenstone to Queen Creek Colorado River water transfer. This last week, the District 1 office convened a meeting of everyone along the Colorado River from the Walupi Tribe down to Yuma that we could. County Manager's Office participated in that, and also Holly Irwin from La Paz County, Yuma County Supervisor Limpencrasy, and also I'll let Sam talk about, he's reached out to his counterparts at both City of Yuma and a few other places. It was a good meeting, very productive, and I'm proud to report to this board that Mojave County is not going to be alone in that legal effort. We're going to see a unified front from all three of the Colorado River counties, Mojave, La Paz, and Yuma, and possibly also from the City of Yuma and a few others, whether that be financially participating in that legal effort or at the very least like amicus briefs, friend of the court briefs in support of that. So I think the town of Queen Creek is going to find that their water is going to cost a little more than $10,000 an acre foot, and hopefully it'll also serve any other hedge funds or central Arizona cities that are thinking about doing their own deals in the future that they might be in for something more than they bargained for in the future. So please do about that. On the groundwater, many of us on this board are going to be going down to the County Supervisors Association Summit this week down in the Tucson area. On a separate coalition, we have Mojave County, we have Yavapai County, we have Coconino County, who have all joined together in support of just some common sense rural guardrails, if you would, on rural groundwater basins. They're finite, they're nonrenewable, they're difficult to recharge, and we need to have a little bit more balance as far as use. So all three of those counties have put forth county resolutions in support of common sense groundwater framework in the 85% of the state that does not have active management areas. Look forward to discussing that and hopefully having CSA take that on as a policy position this next legislative session. We've also had conversations with Leo Biassucci, who represents our Legislative District 30, Sonny Borelli, John Gillette, who was just newly elected, or won his primary, I should say, and all of them are on board to be part of a solution and a strategy on groundwater for this next legislative session. With that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. I also attended the Workforce Development Meeting. County Manager, report.
Good morning, Chairman, Board members. I have one item, and it's a follow-up to what you heard from Supervisor Lingefelter, and that is related to the litigation about the transfer of water. We are coordinating very closely with the law firm that is representing Mojave County to advance this litigation. We have met several times to talk about timeline. They are advancing with the understanding that within the 30 to 60 days that they committed to the board that they would initiate this action, and also coordinating with my counterparts in the two other counties, both Yuma and La Paz, as well as the other players that have interests and concern about this matter. So for your information as the board, your direction is being carried forth through this law firm and will keep you updated as more information becomes available. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Approval of the September 6th, 2022 Board of Supervisor meeting?
So moved.
Second.
You've heard that motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Call of the public. Pursuant to ARS 38-431.01H, "A public body may make an open call of the public during a public meeting subject to reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions to allow individuals to address the public body on any issue within the jurisdiction of the public body. At the conclusion of an open call of the public, individual members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, or to ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the public body shall not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action." Wayne Hollins. And Chris Rodardi's on deck.
Good morning. Wayne Hollins, Golden Valley. Again, waters are a priority, and I see nothing on the agenda. I talked to Supervisor Lincolnfelter last week or so, and they have some specific things that maybe we could do. So I thought about it, and I could come up with probably 50 of them, but I don't have time in three minutes. We could start a conservation board district or zone that benefited the urban and small acreage rural residents to educate them on conservation of water and land and soil and what have you. The current way our conservation district is set up, it benefits mainly the producers in the county, not the normal residents and stuff like that, although it could do that if it so chose to do. That's one thing we could do. We could form a committee to identify water harvesting and green infrastructure projects that could be done and plan and execute, not just have meetings. We have a problem with during the monsoons, again, the, I wouldn't call it silt, we got the whole dang desert washing down across our roads and stuff, so we scrape that back off and put it somewhere. Why don't we fix the problem where it's at and then go upstream that caused the problem and start fixing the problem so it doesn't happen down at those points all the time? Where the money is going to come from? Not having to do it every time we have a monsoon. We do it once, then we only have to do maintenance. We talked about the Walupi Basin being, we're taking out 30,000 acre feet more, we're only recharging 10,000, 12,000 acre feet, but we're using 40-some, and that's only one thing. If every resident in here used an acre foot of water per year, according to your book here, you get five inches of rain, that's 3.59 million acre feet of water. There's only like 215,000 people in the county. That leaves a lot of water running around out there, not being of any beneficial use to anybody. So instead of bringing all this, spending money to bring money in, or water into the county or the state from out of state, why don't we use the water that falls on our head? The same with Queen Creek. They want water, we got to send them water, fix their thing, use that water. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chris Rodardi.
Chris Rodardi, Mojave County taxpayer. In 1780, Samuel Adams wrote, "If ever the time should come when vain and aspiring men shall possess the highest seats in government, our country will stand in need of its experienced patriots to prevent its ruin." Ladies and gentlemen, the time about which Adams wrote has come. From DC to Mojave County, arrogance, smugness, and disdain for we, the people, is on full display. Everything from flippant disdain for those who devote their time and treasure to research and present the facts at this podium, to joking and mocking us, for example Chairman Gould, to Director Smith, how have those meetings with the UN been going? Followed by chuckles from a female voice on live mic. Supervisor Bishop's ditto, ditto, ditto dismissal of citizen dowsing, derision, contempt, gaslighting, and misdirection, all from a panel of public servants elected to represent us. Instead, you belittle, dismiss, berate, and insult. The saddest mockery came during last session's invocation, during which a female voice coming from this board caught on live mic, chuckled during the pastor's prayer, followed by a male voice from this board on live mic tossing in his two cents. To say apologies are due is a sweeping understatement. Given your past performance, I'm not holding my breath. The fact of your defensive posture could mean we are over the target. Nevertheless, your behavior is inexcusable. Please prove me wrong. Do the right thing, save the excuses, remember your oaths of office, treat us with respect, listen to us, and never forget, we have the power of our vote and the power to recall. Honor the voices of these experienced patriots, as Adams described, who stand determined to prevent our country's ruin. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Consent agenda. Whoop, presentation. Whoop, proclamation even. Proclamation, approve the adoption of proclamation declaring the month of October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Mojave County. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould, if this needs a motion, I'll be happy to put that in the form of motions for approval.
Second.
You've heard that motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Presentation of the Mojave County Take Me Home program by the Mojave County Sheriff's Search and Rescue.
All right. Good morning, everybody. I'm Bob Rose. This is Amanda Kaufman with Mojave County Sheriff's Office Search and Rescue. And what we want to do is just give you an overview of what we've been working on, what we've introduced in the county here. It's called the Take Me Home program. Just a little bit of history here, the searches for people who wander away and get lost have been on the increase. These can be folks with dementia, autistic spectrum disorder, brain injuries, just to name a few of the type of cases we go look for. Oftentimes, the caretakers, especially with folks with Alzheimer's, they won't have a current photo, so we're trying to search for somebody with either a driver's license photo from motor vehicles or a Polaroid from 1974, and it puts us at a disadvantage already. The interview process, when we go out on a search, we interview the family, we get the relevant information about the person we're looking for. That can take a lot of time. This program is designed to shorten that time so we can get more valuable information to our searchers in the field immediately. We're constantly seeking newer tools to assist us in our searches so we can bring people back home, and in 2018, that's when we started with this program, trying to make this thing a reality. All right. So what is the program? Basically, it's for people who may need special assistance in times of emergency, and it's a voluntary program that gives law enforcement the ability to access information about a child or an adult dependent or even a juvenile dependent with a communicative disability, and to provide immediate care based upon that information provided by the family member or the legal guardian. Now, it's aimed at those individuals that tend to be at risk for wandering. Really, the kids on the autism spectrum disorder, a lot of those will have what's called bolting behavior, and they will bolt from a 100% safe and secure environment. These could be folks with Down Syndrome or other developmental or cognitive disabilities. And it's also designed to assist folks who may have Alzheimer's or some other form of dementia. So in 2018, we began research on the requirements to establish this program. We kind of stumbled upon it by accident. We had a pretty impactful search in June of 2018 down in Bullhead, and it did not have a favorable outcome by nobody's fault, but we decided we'd teach our own search and rescue members a little bit more about searching for people with developmental disabilities or folks on the autism spectrum and even Alzheimer's disease. And we kind of stumbled across this program. The pilot program was in Pensacola, Florida. There was a model that we kind of looked at down in San Diego County Sheriff's Office. So we brought it up with our superiors, and what we did was we got together with the IT Department, and the IT Department, Eric and his team over there have done a fantastic job taking lead on this, and they worked on a system that would work with the existing county resources and the computer platform that our county has. So in spring 2002, a beta version was released, and IT and STAR and Search and Rescue kind of worked back and forth on that program leading up to August of this year when we finally released the final version, well, at least the initial version, to the public. So the website where folks can go to to get information about it and to sign up for the program, takemehome.mojave.gov, it's available to any resident in Mojave County that might have trouble communicating. This can be people with autism, Down Syndrome, developmental disability, cognitive disabilities, Alzheimer's, or other forms of dementia. The program does work best from a cellphone or tablet, but it works just fine from a desktop platform as well. Currently, what we're doing is introducing this to law enforcement. Law enforcement can also use this program to identify somebody out in the field who may not have the ability to communicate. We're also developing a plan to inform the community about the program. This will include contacting the special needs students and caregivers at schools, at-risk adults in care facilities, and at community events. In fact, our Bullhead unit, I think they promoted it quite a bit. There was an event down in Bullhead last weekend that they promoted it at. And the program has a standard user interface, pretty simple to interact with, it's form-based, menu selections, and free text to enter specific details. And no charge for citizens to enroll any adult or child in this program who may have difficulty communicating due to their disability. There is, however, a responsibility and commitment by those people to keep the system updated and current, especially with current photograph, current information about their likes, dislikes, any pertinent information that would help search and rescue or law enforcement in the field, and we require anyone enrolling an individual to be a family member or a legal guardian. So during the registration process, the information is placed in the database that's maintained by the sheriff's office. The data is secure, and it's only used to help identify or locate an individual, bring them home safely, and the information is not shared, and it's only accessed by law enforcement in the event of an emergency. Okay, here's an example, a couple screenshots from the webpage, but in order to create a user account, it requires a verifiable email. You can create a record for your at-risk child or dependent, pretty much in just three easy steps. The details would include height, weight, other identifying information, upload a current photo, and emergency contact information. Here's an example of some of the screenshots from the registration page. Okay, fairly simple, with dropdown menus and fill-in text boxes. Okay, and this one is particularly important for search and rescue, especially the free text boxes. If you look at some of the behaviors and characteristics of lost persons, especially people who may have a cognitive disability or are on the autism spectrum disorder, they have very specific likes, dislikes, places they may want to go, which will really give search and rescue the information they need immediately to try to check those places and get to them in a timely fashion. Okay, nice example of a photo. Okay, vehicle information, if that's appropriate, and primary contact information. Okay, and the field usage, when we use it in real life out in the field, when we come across a person who's unable to communicate, law enforcement can search those registered. They can either search by name or photo recognition. I didn't even think this was possible, but the IT Department made it so we can hold our camera up to them. It recognizes their face, and if they're in the system, boom, all their information will pop up. We can search by physical characteristics and obviously by their name if they happen to have an identification card. Report of a missing endangered person, law enforcement can use the information entered previously, and we can have immediate access to their physical description, current photos, special or specific behavioral characteristics, and other details. Now, we make it very clear through the website, we want to make it very clear right here, if an endangered person goes missing, call 911 first. Okay, the website is not a vehicle to report a person missing, it's a database to store all the information about the missing person. So as soon as they call 911 and report the person missing, then they can go to the website and add additional details they may feel are relevant at that time. All right, any questions?
Questions? Supervisor Bishop.
I was just wondering, Dr. Rose, is there the availability of the deputy on the scene of a missing person entering this information from the family at the actual scene when the report's being taken, if they haven't already done this?
We have several administrators who have administrative rights to this program where we can add people into the program, but the deputy at that point, I don't believe, will be able to add them.
It's something at that point, once we're in the middle of a search, we're not going to take the time to populate the database, we're going to use the information to locate them, but what we've done, and we've done it on a few searches we've had already, is afterwards, we'll update it with current information, because some people, other caretaker, will not put in there, but we'll want to put them in there because we might run on them more than once, and then that way, we have the ability to add additional details, like here's a picture of their shoe prints, here's their shoe sizes. We can put more of the details that we use on the search and rescue end of it that the caretaker might not be aware of.
Okay.
Supervisor Bishop, at least at this point, the deputy will be able to capture a photo of them, do a search of the database, and if they're in their database, then they'll know who they are. But later on, we'll go ahead and backfill information if that person's not in the database yet.
Okay. I think this is a wonderful program, and I want to thank both of you and the sheriff and our IT Department for all coming together and making it happen. I would hope all of the deputies would be carrying these brochures in their vehicles to give out to the families, but you know, it's free, it can be lifesaving. Based on our current median age level in Mojave County, it's perfect, so thank you so much for this presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Angus.
I thank you again, Search and Rescue, fantastic organization. Thank you for all you do, and this is another program that I think will help and maybe save some people, and I hope our PIO will get all this information out to the newspapers and the media, because you know, there is a lack of technology in some quarters, and if we can help out before a disaster happens, we'd be happy to do that. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's a very good idea. Consent agenda. The following items are listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless the board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Supervisor Bishop, anything to remove today?
None that I see, thank you.
Supervisor Angus?
Nothing this morning.
Supervisor Johnson?
None, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Lingefelter?
Item 28, please.
28. Let's see, so we're looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda less item 28.
So moved.
Second.
You've heard that motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You guys appear to have it, do have it, so ordered. Item 28, Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. Is there a representative from the Recorder's Office present this morning? I pulled this item just for a really simple purpose, for the public. Could you explain who gets to use this emergency voting center and how the county defines emergency?
Good morning. My name's Lydia. I'm the chief deputy recorder, and for emergency voting, that is for any voter that is declaring an emergency, that they cannot make it to the voting polls on Election Day. It's only that Monday before Election Day, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. here in our office, they declare their emergency, they have to complete an affidavit that's then scanned into their voter file.
And are there, is there a specific definition that the county has adopted as far as what constitutes an emergency?
No.
No.
Just the voter saying they cannot make it to the polls, 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Election Day, and they weren't able to go early voting in person either.
Okay. Motion to approve.
You've heard that motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. I vote nay. The ayes appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Public hearings. Item 35 is an open public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing on item 35. Anyone here to testify on item 35? Anyone here to speak to item 35? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 35. What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
Motion to approve with the stipulations that the PNC Commission recommended.
You've heard that motion in second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Item 36 is a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing on item 36. Got a couple of people signed up to speak. Someone named Schaefer. That lives on Silver Eagle in White Hills. S-H-A-F-F-E-R. Okay, moving on.
Well, good morning, and thank you for giving me a few minutes to go over why I'm opposed to the change in the zoning.
I get you to state your name for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I can get you to state your name for the record, please.
The, I have property that is directly adjacent to the parcels that are trying to get the zone changed.
So your name is Scott Klimak?
Scott Klimer.
Thank you, sir.
I'm a resident in White Hills. And as I was here before, staying in my opposition, my biggest concern is back in 2019, the National Center for Biotechnology did some pretty extensive studies on introducing an agricultural-zoned area into an existing residential area, which is what would be occurring here if it were approved. There were issues with pesticide, there were issues with dust, invasive species, fiscus. The biggest problem was respiratory problems. White Hills has a pretty large population of older people. We were really impacted with the COVID, and the respiratory has been a problem, and unfortunately, I was a victim of that too. So, these studies were based on landowners who are very responsible people. When they were granted the rezoning to residential and agricultural, they were good stewards of the land, they abided by all the codes, they abided by all the laws, but it still caused health issues. The final result from the study was, it's not recommended within a residential community to change the code to allow agriculture into the residential area. So that's really my primary concern on this. I do have another concern, is, and it comes down to being responsible. So I understand the applicant currently has a variety of code violations, and if you've got code violations for just residential, what's going to happen if you open up to agriculture? Is that going to be responsibly managed? I think the best way I might be able to address that is, you've got a fox who's sitting there with a belly full of pigeons, and the fox says, never mind allowing me access to the pigeons, I demand access to the chicken coop. And it really doesn't take Nostradamus to kind of figure out where that's going. I just think it's a really bad idea to change this, and especially with the lack of responsibility that's being shown with just residential use.
Thank you, sir.
So I thank you for your time.
Questions for the speaker? Hearing none, thank you, sir.
Yeah, my name is Wayne Glasgow, I live at 8419 Los Cruces, which is directly across the street from this property that he's claiming he's going to run horses on. And I oppose this for several reasons. One, it's going to devalue the property, dust, smell, flies, and insects that are going to be massive amount of problem with that. If truly that he is going to run livestock on this property, he should have bought AR land already, which there's hundreds of acres out there for sale. He wouldn't have had to come to a residential neighborhood and try to rezone it to run livestock on it. My belief is the reason for trying to rezone this is one, so he can get temporary power and temporary use of an RV on this property, which is what he's currently doing now since January, he's been living in an RV there, and now has a shed that he is living in, which is hooked up to sewer. If you allow this zoning to go through, it's just going to give wide open for anybody that wants to come out in a motorhome and park it on a piece of land, and want to rezone it to an RV, to this AR agricultural stuff, so they can get temporary power, which is only 110 volts, and live in an RV. They're going to change our whole entire neighborhood from housing to an RV park. This is not what we need out here. We need homes, we need this to be a nice community, not something that's got a bunch of shacks built on it. So, my whole deal about this is, if you truly want to live here, get a permit, build a home, you can get your power, and bring a horse in there, if that's truly what you're going to do. There's several people that got horses out there that don't have the AR zoning. So, I don't see what the deal is, I don't believe he's going to zone to have agricultural out there at all, it's strictly for the access to power and the RV deal, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Questions for the speaker? Thank you, sir. Pardon me? Sure, you don't have to speak if you don't want to.
I have to move this down, because I'm a little shorter than the other speakers.
Please do.
Good morning, and I'm glad to be here today. Unfortunately, I was unable, and my husband, to the last meeting of the Board of Commissioners on the 13th due to work obligations. I am in charge of Washington, and Oregon, and Las Vegas for a project, and we had an operations meeting that was mandatory. So my name is Barbara Burkey, I live at the property that we're talking about, item number 36. My husband sells real estate, he also was unable to attend that meeting. We were shocked and a little appalled after we watched the meeting the next day, at wild accusations of cardboard bungalows, I think was one of the accusations, and opening a trailer park, or having an RV, you know, kumbaya session there. I've never spoken to one of the neighbors who has accusations against me, and I've spoken to one who is not here today three times. He offered eggs every time he needed a little gossip. We had a three-bedroom, two-bath septic installed when we first landed on the property. We found out we had to have a septic before we could do anything else, which we have many, many hopes and dreams, or at least I do. I'm a girl from Brooklyn, never had land before, I was very excited about it, heard all these great stories about, you know, get vacant land, it's easy, lies, all of them. But we filed out an application to combine three of our lots, so we bought six individual lots, and we found out there's power at the end of one of our lots, and there's septic now on one of our lots. So we had three of them combined, so we can have power, and we can have septic once we submit our building plans. We submitted for an RV permit, and as we were talking to the Planning and Zoning, who are fantastic people, by the way, and I told them I wanted horses, I had seen a lot of people who had horses, like on small, sorry, small little one-acre lots, and I found out that some of them are residential, and you are not supposed to have horses on those kinds of properties. So they said, hold off on submitting any of your permits until you have your hearing and find out if you can be changed to AR. My grandchildren have been riding horses at Double Y Ranch in Las Vegas for five years, so the accusation and the guarantee by one of the people against us, that we're never going to have horses. I've been trying to find out how to adopt or rescue horses from Cindy De La Verre, and it was in one of the letters I've submitted to this board to review. She could not be here due to medical conditions, but she gave her personal cellphone number to ensure you guys that, I want horses, two, maybe three. Grandma can't really get on and off the horses as easily as my grandchildren can, but I'd like to have two or three horses. We're not talking about a commercial giant, you know, horse farm out there, we're talking about three horses, possibly two, because I found out how much they cost, and how much it costs to feed them, and how much it costs for a vet visit from Kingman. So, I am also applied for the rezoning. That was an $800 non-refundable application fee. I got to tell you, when they told me that, I was a little taken aback, because I work two jobs now to try to get this property in order, and to do what I need to do. Okay? We have one code violation against us, and it's for not having an RV permit. So, I just wanted to say that I'm hoping you guys will vote for us, and not take slander and wild accusations, unfounded accusations against us, and that you'll take the evidence, I've submitted a package to you guys with all my permit requests, and that I've spent a lot of money, you know, so I'm hoping you'll vote for us to get the rezoning. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, ma'am. Let's call the, somebody Schaefer, one more time, that lives on Silver Eagle.
We've got a restraining order against him, he might not come.
Thank you. Oh, wait. There's a note on here. He's in opposition, okay. I'm going to close the public hearing on item 36.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
Could I hear from the Development Services Director? Tim, can you just answer all the questions I might have?
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Bishop, I will do my best.
So the obvious is, can this property owner still have a horse based on current zoning? If they build a stick-built home that's on the property, can they also have a horse?
The property is currently zoned R1, which does not allow for horses to be kept on the property. So the AR zone would allow, the rezone to AR would allow for horses to be kept on the property, but currently as it is, it cannot.
Okay, and, so if we approve the rezone, they could continue living there in just an RV and the little shed?
So currently, the property, with the current zoning of R1, it does not allow for a temporary use of an RV as a temporary residence. The AR zone would allow for that. So the rezone to an AR zone would allow for the temporary permitting of an RV as a temporary residence.
And then they could live there as long as they renew that permit annually?
That's correct.
Indefinitely. What does the surrounding neighborhood look like?
So, this is the, out in White Hills, let me see if I can bring it up real quick. We had a number of these properties in the area be rezoned not too long ago, I'd say probably five or six months back. There was probably about 70 properties in the area. It was a blanket rezoning from the R1 to the AR that did then allow those properties to use RVs as a temporary residence. Let's see if I can pull this up here to kind of show the area where we're looking. See if IT can do anything with that. So we're up in the White Hills area, White Hills Boulevard coming off here, and then, just to zoom in a little bit, some of the existing subdivisions that are in that area, generally all one-acre larger lots, and, let's see if I can show, so these are the four lots, you can see down further, we've got some AR in this area, you've got some, surrounding is all R1, one-acre minimums, and then to the northwest, you've got some AR, five-acre minimums in that area. So, AR is not foreign to this area, there is a number of AR properties in the area.
Okay, I know White Hills is a developing community, and it looks like it's going to develop rather quickly based on the information that I've received. I have mixed feelings on this rezoning. White Hills is trying to be, trying to better themselves, and if we continue to let RVs be the main residence on a property, I can see the fear that the other property owners have, that it does bring down the appearance of the neighborhood. So with that, I think I'm going to agree with the commission that voted unanimously for denial. And do you have anything else to add that might, might be noteworthy on this?
Just as you mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of denial of this item, and just to confirm, we do have an open violation on the property of an occupied RV. This action would then assist, or the action of approving the rezone would allow them to then bring that property into compliance, but currently it is in violation.
Do you know how long the RV has been used on the property as a residence?
I don't have that information. It was brought to our attention, and it's been, I think, just about a month that we've had them in violation. So I don't know how long prior to that, that it had been there, but within the last month, we've had it in violation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Director Walsh? Hearing none, thank you, sir.
Chairman Gould, I make a motion that we deny. I'll second that.
You've heard that motion in second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. Do you have it? So ordered. Item 37 is a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing on item 37. Anyone here to testify on item 37? Come on up and state your name and your address.
Good morning, Supervisor, my name's Larry Moore. I simply spent the $800 to have my 40 acres just changed to a couple of 10 acres, so my sister-in-law could have a place to live here. I have no idea why she wants to do that. She's a resident of California, and she likes it there, but I told her, you know, you could park your little travel trailer on my land anytime you like, but she wanted to buy a piece of land in Arizona, so I spent the $800 to, you know, to have the commission say, you can do this, and that's what they said last time I was at the meeting. And so I'm just here to further that along, okay? And I appreciate you, thank you so much for your time, have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Questions for the applicant?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Linganfelter.
I'd like to ask Development Services Director Walsh up to the podium, please.
You can't. Not yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a public hearing, right?
Yeah.
Sorry. My bad. Sorry, Tim.
Anyone else here to speak on item 37? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on item 37. Supervisor Linganfelter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould.
Tim, this appears to be one of those situations where three-fourths vote of the members of the board because of the 20% opposing. How many exactly did we get that were, as far as public comments, into your department, for and against? Chairman Gould, Supervisor Linganfelter, item 37, we received two letters of opposition and zero letters in favor. The two letters of opposition were insufficient size and proximity that they constituted the three-fourths vote. Yeah, it's, it's what I, what I had thought.
Yeah, it's, it's what I, what I had thought. I had heard of it, of two. Sparcely populated out there. Um, you know, I think the gentleman is trying to split for family members, obviously. The commission recommended approval by seven to one. So I don't have a problem with this.
Further questions for Director Walsh? Supervisor Bishop.
Director Walsh, this, this property is surrounded by the Walupi Tribe, state land, and BLM land, and it looks like it's about seven parcels, and they're all very large parcels. So I've received several phone calls from people that live in this very, very small and isolated area. I haven't received any information where the people are in favor of this. It's kind of a rural lifestyle. They say that they purchased this property because it is surrounded by state and, and federal and the Walupi Tribe, so that they could remain kind of isolated. So, um, I, I would not be in, in support of this based on those conversations. Thank you.
Further questions for Director Walsh? Supervisor Lingefelter.
Thank you, Chairman Gould. As this is in my district, I'm gonna make a motion that we adopt BOS Resolution 2022-181, approving the rezon.
Second.
You've heard that motion and second. I'm gonna read the statement. Arizona Vice Statute 11-814.D relating to county zoning indicates that if 20% of the property owners of by area and number within the zoning area file protests with the proposed change, the change shall not be made except by a three-quarter vote of the members of the Board of Supervisors. Per this statute, 20% of the owners oppose this rezoning and 20% of the area oppose the rezoning. So you've heard that motion. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
The ayes appear to have it. Do have it. So ordered. Item 38 is a public hearing. I'm gonna open the public hearing on item 38. I've got a couple of people that would like to speak. Jeanette Duran.
Last month, when I was here, I opposed this change, but after the meeting, I went to the property, the facility, and I saw this owner of this business take what had been a dirty, nasty, greasy, small engine repair shop and turn it into a beautiful, really nice facility that I was really shocked. The woman that owns this business has spent a lot of time and money to rehab this building. I have the only home on this whole block. I'm right next door to the facility, and I, like I say, I toured it. And at this point, I have to tell you, you need to approve this, this, uh, application because, I mean, the only, across the street, you got a liquor store and an empty lot. There's not another house for a block away. My house is the only one next to it, the only one really affected by it. There's a couple businesses around there. But this is really, this woman has cleaned up the property and made it nice, and I gotta tell you, these are the kind of business owners we want in Kingman. So having, being the only one with property next to it, um, I hope that you approve this because I went and investigated for myself, and I was really surprised. This, this is a good thing. Does anybody have any questions?
Can't take questions at this time. We aren't allowed to take questions during the public hearing portion. If somebody has a question, they can call you back up later.
Okay. Well, I hope you, you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jordan Brienne Alter.
Hello, my name is Bree. I'm the one who's proposing this zoning change. I own the grooming salon next door. I'm aware of the letters of opposition, but I would like to make note that one man has gone around with a petition with false information. These people signing the petition are signing about, they don't, they don't want me doing something that I'm not doing in the first place. I'd like a chance to explain my business plan a little better so people could understand what I'm actually doing. To start, dog boarding is the legal definition of my plans, but it is far from the typical boarding scenario. I will only be watching four to six dogs at a time. This small-scale operation will consist of pets I groom regularly as an extension of my grooming services. These dogs are already familiar and comfortable with me, making stress levels low. These dogs will be exercised, played with, and enriched, which leads to quiet, happy dogs. These dogs will have beds, large indoor runs, and indoor/outdoor supervised play space. My grooming salon takes in about 15 dogs a day and produces much more noise, and I've never received a noise complaint in the four years I've been open. Um, I'd just like to take the chance to say that this is something that the Kingman area really needs. We really only have one area that boards dogs, and they are over flooded with clients. You know, I even have her support. She's gonna send some business my way. But, um, this is far from what this man has got these petitions going about. If you look over his petition, it states something like, I'm gonna be dragging the dogs through the neighborhood, I'm gonna be shoving a lot of dogs in a small building, and that's just not what's happening.
We can't ask you questions during the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
We can be called back up after if somebody has a question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Callie Cropper, and, um, Jordan Brienne Alter moved here in about 2016. She worked at the Paw Spa for two years, and when the Paw Spa owner decided to go out of business, she, the owner sold, sold, um, Jordan Brienne Alter, all of her, most, a lot of her grooming equipment, and Jordan, or Bree, got to leave with all of her own clients. So she opened up her own business. She became my commercial renter for two years, and then she had the opportunity of this, this business, this location, and she has been there for two years. And in the two years she was with me, there was not one complaint. She was a person that is above and beyond. Her word means something, and the laws really matter to her, and she's got a lot of integrity, and she did not have one complaint. And she's the type of girl that if she, if she owes you money, she's not gonna sit down until she pays you the money. She's just, she's just got a lot of credibility, and I really admire her a lot, and I wish her the best. And I've seen her facility, and it's, it's beautiful. So that's everything. Thank you so much for taking this time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here to testify on item 38? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing on item 38.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
I have questions for the applicant. Good morning, Bree. First of all, thank you for being a groomer. I, I groomed my little tiny toy poodle last night. It's a lot of work. I have two standards that are with the groomers right now, so I love you guys. And, um, I travel a lot, so it's really important to have a safe place to, to leave your, your pet. So I appreciate what you're doing, and some of my concerns with this, just so you know, is the neighborhood. Would there be, um, barking at night after closing hours? You know, how one dog kind of plays off another, and one barks, and everybody barks? Or they do at my house, anyway.
Right. Well, the goal is, an enriched dog is a quiet, happy dog. These dogs are gonna be played with regularly, exercised. They're gonna be too tired to be a pain. I am gonna have security cameras, so when I'm not on property, I will be notified immediately of noise complaints before anyone has a chance to complain. And I live about two minutes away, so I can go handle it.
That's great. You could, that was my next question, is would you be willing to install cameras so that you can monitor?
Absolutely, part of my plan.
And then the hours that the dogs would be left alone with video monitoring would be, uh, what, from five at night to five in the morning?
Pretty much sleeping hours. I'd be checking in on them about eight o'clock PM, coming back to check in them about seven o'clock AM, barring any, you know, my phone notifying me of the building got loud.
Okay, um, you know, initially, I, I was going to go along with the commission with their denial, but I think with, with the idea of the monitoring, the video monitoring, and the neighbor that so graciously came and spoke in support, that I, I think I'm gonna support this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Director Walsh? I had a question for you. So if this property's rezoned for, from C1 to C2, what does C2 allow to be used on that property?
Great question, one that I wasn't all the way ready for. I've actually got Matt Gunderson here with me. I'm gonna put him on the spot to help me to make sure I don't miss anything with that. Matt Gunderson is my planning manager. Scott Holter's out of town at a training, so Matt's gonna step in and help me out.
Chairman Gould, the C2 zone is our general commercial zone. It's typically used for retail, indoor retail. Probably the most intense use that it allows for is a storage facility that's completely indoor.
So no auto repair shops, uh?
No, it does. The C2 zone allows for light auto servicing, which we is, is a tire or lube shop, but not auto repair.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Tim, since you're at the podium, um, curious as to, um, the seven to one denial vote by the commission. What, what did they see? I mean, when I'm looking at the packet, it looks like somebody went around with a, with a form letter in opposition.
Chairman Gould, Supervisor Lingefelter, I believe that was a, a big part of the, the denial, was, was the number of folks that, that came out and spoke against it. We initially had six against it and, and zero in favor, but as was mentioned, Ms. Duran changed from opposition to, to support of it. So now we've got five letters against and, and one in favor of it. But from, from memory, I believe that was the, the, probably the, one of the bigger factors on the commission on, on their decision was the number of, of letters in opposition and, and the comments there.
I'm glad to clarify, you know, when I, when I see a handwritten letter from somebody that has changed their mind because they've gone out and they've actually looked at the facility themselves versus a, a form letter in opposition, which, how many of those people actually went out and, and looked at the property themselves, or did they just assign their name to something without actually looking at it and becoming familiar with the topic? So I think I'm gonna probably support this as well. Thank you.
Director Walsh, we don't have any kind of, uh, special use permit where it could keep the, or the C1 zoning and allow this particular business to operate?
Getting a, a head shake from, from Matt, so no, I don't believe we do.
Because a lot of time, my concern is that if, if this business moves, then this property is then, has been rezoned for a higher use.
Chairman Gould, one suggestion I could make that, that may help alleviate that concern is, is the board does have the ability to limit the approved use for that zone. So the board could, similar to, um, the previous item with, in Golden Valley, um, the zoning allowed for commercial manufacturing, open lot storage, but limited it to only the open lot storage. So the board does have the ability on this item to limit it to just a, a dog grooming and, and boarding, uh, use on that property as well.
Would the applicant be, would that be acceptable to the applicant? Are you the owner of the property?
I'm not. My landlord is in Henderson. But, um, throw me a, I have a, I have a, I have a. I'm not the current owner of the property, though I do have plans to buy it in the future. My landlord lives in Henderson. I left her contact information. She's happy to say that she approves of everything I'm going for as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
I'll make a motion that we approve the rezon.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Would Supervisor Bishop be open to amending her motion to limit it to dog board, or to dog grooming, as Chairman Gould had, had asked about?
Well, that's an interesting concept, except the building is not really conducive to any type of a business other than retail shops. It's just a little stick-built building on, on a lot. There's no room to, to do an auto repair place or, or anything else. I, I don't think it needs that restriction. I'll second.
You've heard that motion and second.
Chairman Gould, if I, I might, I, I don't think it, it sounds like the, the motion does not include it, but, uh, Matthew just made a, a point to me that if we were to restrict it, um, as this, as this occupant is only a portion of the overall building, that may cause problems with the other tenants in restricting what can be used in those other, uh, office spaces to that as well. So it, it may be better, better suited without that condition.
Okay, thank you.
You've heard that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. Do have it. So ordered. Regular agenda. Um, item 39. Oh, this was the legal.
That was executive session.
Okay, so that, no actions required on that.
Yes.
Uh, item 40.
Attorney Aspen. Uh, thank you, Chairman. This is an item where we're asking the court to authorize the receipt of settlement monies from the settling distributors, in this case, AmerisourceBurgin, Cardinal Health, McKesson, from the opioid litigation for year 2021. Authorize the chairman and staff to sign all necessary documents for that, and authorize the county staff to distribute monies to the cities and towns in accordance with the distribution formula. So a couple things here, a little bit of background. As the board is aware, the board filed suit against the opioid manufacturers and distributors, I believe in 2019. Since that time, there's been a lot of things that have been going on, on a statewide level, a lot of different lawsuits and things. The state of Arizona came together with, with the Attorney General's Office, as well as the cities and towns of Arizona, agreed to a distribution model if there was any settlements that came through. And notably, there were two important settlements that were, have been made. One was with the distributors, which is, this is, this is the first one. And then the second one is with Johnson &amp; Johnson, or Janson. And, um, what this represents is the first year payment of settlement monies with the settling distributors. In this case, Mojave County would receive just shy of $400,000, which would then be, then there's a percentage by which the amount stays with the county, and the remaining percentages then go to the cities and towns in Mojave County. That would be Bullhead City, Lake Havasu City, Kingman, and Colorado City. The way the, it, it's a little bit, it's a little bit difficult to determine exactly how much we're going to receive, but we did receive some guidance from our attorney, uh, last week. And what we anticipated, and again, this is just to emphasize, this is an estimated amount, and there are certain assumptions being made. We assumed, let me just get this, we assumed that the total payout between the distributors and Johnson &amp; Johnson will, to the state of Arizona, will be about $549 million. If, assuming that's correct, then the approximate payout to Mojave County total over all of those years would be $8 million. And then Bullhead City, 1.69 million, Colorado City, 78,000, Kingman, 1.27 million, and then Lake Havasu City, 1.79 million. As you can see, um, this As you can see, this first payout is $400,000, but each year, the amounts will fluctuate based on a couple of different factors. One being when the settlement amounts start. For example, year one here, we have the settling distributors, but that doesn't include Johnson &amp; Johnson, but we anticipate that that will be coming. And that's part of that 8 million amount that we're trying to get to. The Johnson &amp; Johnson payouts are over an 11-year period. And whereas this one is over an 18-year period. There's also a couple of different other factors that go in there that change the fluctuation of the amounts. But we anticipate that the fluctuation amounts will increase each year. I don't know by how much, and again, it's just estimates. But I'll give you one example. We know for 2021, the current one is just shy of $400,000 that Mojave County will be receiving. But then we already have the amount for 2022, which is 454,566. So it's gone up by a little over $50,000 after year one. And then hopefully, then in year three and so on, we'll get more and more, eventually up to that 8 million. Now, this does not include any settlements that we receive from any bankruptcy actions. For example, there is the Mallinckrodt bankruptcy that I've brought before the board a couple of different times. This doesn't include those monies. It also does not include the Purdue bankruptcy, if there's any kind of settlement in that. That one is currently tied up in litigation in the second circuit, so this is not the Purdue bankruptcy. Also, we received a bankruptcy filing recently from Endo, which is another pharmaceutical company, I believe, and we may get some monies from that. The Mallinckrodt and the Endo ones would be very, very small amounts. Purdue could be more, but again, that's tied up and that could be a while before the Purdue bankruptcy gets resolved. But really, what we're waiting here, what is before the board today is to authorize the receipt of the payments and get things started. So I welcome any questions that you have.
Questions for Mr. Esplin.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Angus.
So we started on this in 2019, you said? And it just seems that every time we talked about it, you know, as these things happen, it changes, you know? The numbers change, you know, things change. I guess that's the nature of it. But throwing this 18 years at us, this was the first time, at the very end, as we're at the finish line. Now we're being told that it's over an 18-year period of time, which, you know, for the things that we could do with that money, which I, you know, I thought we were going to do, it's going to be a lot harder. And so at some point, you say, you know, what happened? That's what I, when I saw that, and I even spoke to some people at the state, even someone at the Attorney General's office who didn't know. They had to go look it up and they were surprised. It was over 18 years. So where did the switcheroo come in? Like, when did all that happen?
I don't know. That's a great point. Certainly, I wish that it would have been a little bit more condensed, 10 years or less or something like that. I do recall that, at least I was informed, that there would be payments over time. I just don't know when the number of 18 came up. I apologize. If I didn't convey that to you, it's on my fault. I apologize. I do know that, at least I was told that there'd be payments probably in, at least 2021. So I'm not surprised that these are broken down in payments. And also too, to emphasize, the distributors is 18 years, the Johnson &amp; Johnson is 11. I don't know why they decided on two different terms. Why is one 18, one 11? But I don't know.
So the first number, what's the first number that you said that will be coming?
So with this item, the number that will be coming is 399,668.26.
So about 400,000. But out of that 400,000, the certain percentages go to the city. That's not just the county. So again, we figured it was going to be probably about 250,000 in the next two years, so about a half a million we'll be getting within a period of about a year between, you know, all together. Okay, but can that change? I mean, if it's over 18 years, is that set in stone? Or can that, I know you said it's going to fluctuate, but the amount will not change?
Again, it's just certain assumptions and estimates, but the estimate, it looks like it's still tracking at that 8 million mark that we were told back in 2021.
And that 8 million, again, is divided up through the, that's just ours?
That's just ours.
Just Mojave County?
That's my understanding.
Not Bullhead City or any of the cities?
Yeah, so 8 million would go to Mojave County, 1.69 million goes to Bullhead, 78,000 to Colorado City, 1.27 to Kingman, and 1.79 to Lake Havasu.
And I just, again, I just want to remind everyone that when we voted to enter the lawsuit, that we did put into our motion that it had to be used for certain things. And I did read what their qualifications are, what they require. And it's similar, although there's a lot more gray area. And I'm hoping we keep it to what this board said that we were going to use it for. And I'm sure we'll talk about that at another meeting, right?
Yes, so, I mean, the board still has to decide how you want to use these monies. And that's not for the board today.
Right.
Really, what today is, they've given us the website, said, okay, here's where you put in your information, and it's really just, you know, put in your bank account information so that the money can come into the county. That's really what we're doing today, is authorize and receipt of those payments and then distribute it to the cities based on the percentages that we talked about.
Okay, thank you.
How you wish to use those, that'll come before the board in the future. If, I welcome any other questions, but I have one other thing I want to emphasize to the board. I do, I want to make sure to give the board credit for taking, really, the proactive steps in this. And just to emphasize that this is not, this is not a government program. This is a creature, a function of litigants coming together. Different entities have come together and holding the persons responsible for the opioid epidemic, holding them responsible and trying to be proactive with it. It's not something that the legislatures took, the legislatures did not take any steps. The federal government did not take any steps. This is purely a creature of litigation and legal action that was taken.
Supervisor Johnson.
I was going to stay out of this until you said the opioid companies forced this on the people to take these drugs. I very much disagree with that, but I'll stay out.
Certainly, I respect the positions there. I'm not, I guess the point that I'm trying to make, though, is this is not a situation where the federal government came in and said, this is, we're going to pass legislation to handle this. There's no legislation that was passed. That's the point I was trying to make with that statement.
Further questions for Attorney Esplin? What's the will of the board?
Chairman Gould, let's see. Authorize, make a motion to authorize receipt of the settlement monies from the settling distributors from the opioid litigation for year 2021 and authorize the chairman and staff to sign all necessary documents on behalf of the county.
Second.
You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. Do have it. So ordered. Item 41. Is Mr. Hogard here today? Didn't see him.
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you. I had my assistant pull up the constable logs with the assistance of the clerk of the board. Thank you, Jenny. I had her take one month, about in the middle of the last 12 months, and look and see what has been required for Constable Cobb to perform handling both precincts. So he's serving for the Kingman precinct and the Serbet precinct because we have a vacancy. And we're discussing today whether or not to fill that vacancy early. So with her research, she chose the month of April. During the month of April, there were 47 total papers served in the combined two precincts. 49 of those services were from Superior Court. Superior Court, by statute, the sheriff's office typically serves for Superior Court. Doesn't mean constables can't, but it's the responsibility of the sheriff's office. Then there was one paper served outside of the area and two constable assists. So I took that information and looked at the type of services that they did during that month. And they're all just one-page documents with the exception of seven RITS. RITS do take a few hours to do them, their evictions, property evictions. Two of those were in districts other than the Kingman area. One was Havasu and one was Bullhead City. So actually, there were seven items that took some time. Everything else was like a 10-minute serve after you drive the distance to get there. So in summary, I think Constable Cobb has done an outstanding job of doing not only both precincts workload, but he's taken on 49 documents that should or could have been served by the sheriff's office. So with that information, I would make a motion that we deny appointing this position early and just let the election process take its course.
Second. You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion? Would you like to speak? Come on down.
Is this the guy? No, he's Havasu. I'm the staff Stansbury.
Chairman and supervisors, I apologize I didn't sign up. I didn't anticipate needing to speak today. We need, I need help. Right now, Ray's been off the job for six or seven months. Mike Cobb's been trying to cover his territory and that territory. He's now at the end of his term. He's taken a pay cut as you voted for. And he's using a lot of his personal time off right now. Mike Hamilton has been unavailable for a whole month. I'm trying to cover the whole county myself. I really need some help. I had a job in Yucca 10 days ago. There was a RIT that required some assistance, so I had the two deputies in the sheriff's department back me up. After a couple hours getting that resolved, they both asked me what was going on, but they could hardly handle the uptick in business. I'm asking for help. This money's been budgeted and approved by the Board of Supervisors to pay for this position. I got reprimanded prior to this for passing out contact information for you guys, but I can't take the heat anymore. I can get to what I can get to, and when I get scolded by your constituents, I'm going to give them your contact information if we can't get some help. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Johnson.
You're elected for Lake Havasu, so what are you doing in Yucca?
That's part of my territory.
Go all the way out into Yucca?
My territory is from Bill Williams Bridge to Oatman, Topock, Golden Shores, half of Yucca. Approximately half of Yucca.
So if that's what you're elected to, why do you need help?
Because it was a two-acre parcel. The guy truly believed that he'd owned the property. He had it chain-linked fenced and gated with multiple animals and nine buildings to clear. And I was a long ways from help. I understand you believe it's not a very serious position. One of my colleagues was shot and killed about six weeks ago. And like I told you in our personal meeting, it's dangerous out there.
I'm not saying any, every job is dangerous, but I mean, if that's your area, why would people be calling the Board of Supervisors saying that you can't do your job?
If I get any heat because I can't get to them fast enough, and trust me, if I get there in 24 hours, they're unhappy. So if I tell them I can't get to their territory till next week, I'm just, I don't want to be scolded if I give out your contact information.
I don't care. That's all. Thank you.
With all due respect, you're the one that scolded me for giving out your contact information.
I don't believe so. What I said is, you run for a job. If you can't do the job, then you need to step down. Don't be putting the onus on the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors pays the salary that is set, how is set by us. We give a budget for all the supplies you need. We pay for whatever else you need. If you don't like the job like they tell us, then don't run for it.
That's not the point, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Further questions for Constable Stansbury? Thank you, sir. There's a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say nay. I vote nay. The ayes appear to have it. Do have it. So ordered. Item 42. I think the attorneys have prepared a motion.
I have Chairman Gould. If, what I'm asking the board to do is to authorize the county attorney's office to proceed as instructed in the executive session held today.
So moved. Second.
You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. Do have it. So ordered. Item 43. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You all have in front of you the resolution for Cyber Security Month. We've done this in the past, and I'm asking that we do it again. There's no questions, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. Do have it. So ordered. Item 44. Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Cyber security is becoming more important in our everyday lives with the advancement of technology. Experts predicted by 2013, more and more jobs are replaced by computers. We've all seen technology changes in just the last decade. We went from smart locks to nearly every item in our house having internet connection today. While there are online tutorials out there on how the average person can navigate this ever-changing world and how to secure their devices, there is a time so much information is hard to tell what is reputable and what is not. My idea is to put together some outreach programs in the three cities regarding cybersecurity and information technology for the public. I've spoken to the Director McDaniel, who has an idea on how to create such a program. It wouldn't cost us much to put these on, and we could utilize our public libraries to hold them. Now we do everything on phones, from online banking to stock markets. There are also hackers and threats out there that could destroy somebody's identity in a split second. Offering this chance for the public to get some of the same cybersecurity tips and tricks that we get as county employees would help our community.
It's a pleasure of the board.
Chairman Gould, I'll make a motion that we direct staff to create this public outreach program as described by Supervisor Johnson. Second.
You've heard that motion and second. Any further discussion?
Chairman Gould.
Supervisor Lingefelter.
Would there be a budget for this program?
What was the question?
Would there be a budget for this program, for this outreach program?
I was just going to take it out of Nathan's money. I don't think it's going to be that expensive. It'll just take, you know, his people's time. If he does need extra money, come back to us.
All right, thank you.
Motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes appear to have it. Do have it. So ordered. Item 45.
Chairman Gould, motion to approve.
Was there a motion or no?
Yes.
Oh, it was your motion? I'm sorry.
Motion to approve. Second.
So motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
I'm going to vote nay. The nays appear to have it.
No.
I got, I got three. Want a roll call?
Supervisor Johnson, what was your vote?
Nay.
Okay, thank you.
The nays appear to have it.
Oh.
Do have it. So ordered. That concludes the agenda. Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing nothing. Rejourn.